Okay, if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Amendments to the agenda.
I have one tonight. If we could add attorney-client communication under executive session 1 VSA 313A1, please.
Do I have a motion?
Motion to add the attorney discussion, was that what it was? To the executive session.
Attorney-client communication.
Attorney-client communication.
Okay, second. We know what we're doing. All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Any other amendments to the agenda? Moving on, moving on to approval of the minutes of May 27.
I think a motion to approve the minutes of the May 27 meeting as written.
I will second that motion.
May I have a second to say? Any errors, deletions, comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Department had reports. Looks like sewer. We get a report from sewer, don't we?
So, right now, we're, I'm trying to finalize everything for that insurance claim that we had from the phase problem. We're still, I'm still waiting on Arizona to come inspect one of our blowers. It may have taken out the bearings of one of our blowers. That's, I guess, a pretty common thing with the phase protection with those blowers. Everything else is back up and running. Plant's running great. So, even with all the rain that we've had, numbers look great.
Cool. Was that power surge or something?
Well, it wasn't a surge. It was, it was actually the opposite. We went down to one phase instead of three, which is actually worse than our surge. Yeah, pretty much the only, we do have surge protection. And when I had talked to Don Foltz, the electrical engineer that had designed the plant, he had thought that he had put phase protection into the bid, and he had not. So, but, we'll talk about that more when we get to my budget.
Good. Any questions or anything for Karen?
And Eli is back part-time. So, he's our half guy to bring us back up to two and a half, but he's not really half. He's more like an eighth. But we'll take all the helping up.
Good. So, Joe, are you going to be the other department?
It seems like I'm filling in for everybody else. We'll start with the thank you card, though. Gilmore says, "Thank you for putting in the memorial bench. They really appreciated it. It meant a lot to them for their, for their longtime employee who passed." So, Gilmore's sent over that. And we'll do the police report. So, over the last two weeks, our police department has 109 traffic or municipal violations issued, 38 written warnings, had no parking violations, four car crashes, and no overweight permits over the last two weeks. They have done nine sets of civilian fingerprints, though. We're a little bit from the water department. The water department finally has their, their valve exerciser mounted to their trailer. And next week, they'll start doing the exercising of our water valves. This is something new that, that we're starting this year. It's not something that we've done systematically, but Mike, Mike and Jeff are doing a good job getting that, getting that rolling. Mike's going to be participating in this, I'm going to, hopefully I say this right, sinobacteria testing again this year. And I don't know what that is, but it's something we started doing voluntarily. And they're doing the daily testing and just keeping up the plan as usual. From my office and...
DPW or?
Yep, well, my office and DPW.
Okay.
You see, the guys with the little bit of wet weather, they're upgrading. They were out yesterday, and I think they were a little bit today. The crosswalk signs, the flashers that we bought, those are in and they're assembling them. I went down, they were putting them together today. We finally got the chipper back. If you remember, there was a problem with the engine. They had to rebuild that. One of the cylinders had started to give up. So, they rebuilt the, the chipper, and that's back in our possession. In anticipation of the Scotch Hill repaving, they have been out cutting, not they, but we do have a company out cutting back the, the bush, the brush on Scotch Hill. So, there's trees coming down, brushes getting pushed back. They had the mower out there sometime this week, this week or last week, pushing the brush back as well. We're best guessed, depending on the weather, we're looking at August, probably mid-August for Scotch Hill repaving. We're going to start down near the culverts where the paving we did last year where that ends. We're going to do about a mile and a half moving in this direction. And that's, you know, a complete reclaim. We're going to grind it up, redo that base, and then put a top course on it.
Has Wilkes got back to us and said that they can make the August, or that's what we're asking for?
That's, that's Wilkes's date.
That's their date.
They're gonna, they're gonna get a little bit, because they're doing, I think it's 131 right by my house right now, and it's a long stretch of road. So, I think they're going to try to get that done and then jump over here.
Good.
And I don't, I don't know that for a fact. It's just what I, I see. From my office and a little bit more DPW, if you look, the light post has been installed, and the insurance company is paying for that, the entire cost. We replaced some signs over there as well. It's, the payment is in this packet. So, there was a $15,000 and change bill to Belden's, and that's completely paid by the insurance company, their insurance company. If you remember, last year, we were trying to get a memorandum of understanding between us and the school for the playground. I sent that back to the school for their input again. They responded, so we're moving forward with that. The local resident, Troy Luther, if you know him, he's been working hard with GE to get some paving stones donated to Fairhaven so we could put in a walking path at the playground to improve that space. Right now, if you go in from the parking lot into the playground, it's just a dirt path with some, you know, weedy weeds right there. We want to put a path in all the way as far as we can up past the bathrooms.
Do you know how many are needed?
He's, has something like 36 pallets.
Oh, okay.
He has, he has a good portion, so we're going to see.
Is that work ever done by the volunteers through the recreation committee?
That work is going to be, that's a good question. I don't know if the GE core volunteers is going to help out with that.
I, I, I was just, I was just wondering who was...
GE is palletizing the bricks, because right now, some of there in somebody's backyard, and they just fell apart. So, they're palletizing the bricks, and they're getting donations to ship them here to Public Works. We're going to have to find a way to get it laid, get those pavers laid.
But you understand what I'm saying, isn't it?
Yeah, that's not a cheap task.
It's not, uh, getting stuff donated, that we, if we have to pay for, for labor and everything, I want to rethink of what, what, why.
Yep.
Have one more conversation in that, if it's not being done. Free labor.
Sure. No, no money has been allocated to that project.
Okay, so then...
Are, are we putting anything under the pavers? Are we going to put like gravel or riprap or?
We're just getting the product right now.
Okay.
We should do it right, which would be excavating, putting down base, yes.
Okay.
Now, we get to congratulate Jeff Higgins. He finally passed his water operator test, so congratulations to Jeff. Back to Public Works, they were out cold patching. They did four tons last week. If you're up on Airport Road, they were ditching on Airport, and they did have the mower on Scotch Hill. As a heads up to, to our residents, July 1st is the deadline. It's the, the deadline for our dump stickers, so you need to redo your dump stickers. If not, we're going to start kicking people out of the dump. Come Saturday, the 5th, you're going to pull up to the gate, and somebody's going to stand there and say, "Do you have a dump sticker?" And if you say no, we're going to turn you around. So, I understand that makes people mad, and makes us a little, makes us sound grumpy, but the rule is the rule, and we're trying to follow our rules. We will try to sell stickers on site.
I was going to ask.
I got, I got a whole pile of, if I was one of the people on the pickup truck, and I showed up, and you turned me away, and you didn't have a sticker you could sell me?
Sure.
I would be more than a little upset.
Sure.
So, I...
If you buy your dump stickers ahead of time, save your thoughts.
Seven, $7 versus $10, it's a bargain before the 1st of July.
Yep, yeah, we do the early bird special every year.
But if, if I'm not mistaken, whoever's going to be collecting or selling those stickers on that Saturday, I assume they're only going to take checks the way they only are able to check.
They're only going to take a ton.
No cash, no Venmo, no?
No Venmo.
Yeah, all right.
We're not, right, we're not there, but...
It's going to be a tough road to hoe, and I'm going to get some phone calls.
Okay.
Yep. And I did meet with Sean Gavin last, last week. He's, he's excited to bring the Legion back into the fold and try to take a larger part in organizing the parade. So, Reese is going to set up a meeting with the Legion, and then the Chamber as well, and the town, and see what we can do to do better. Every year, it seems like the parade goes by, and we say, "Boy, this could be much better. We should do better." So, this is going to be our year. We're starting right now. And I think that's all I have for you today.
And polls close just about 12 minutes ago for our bond vote, so we're waiting anxiously to hear all that. Okay. Any questions from the board for Joe?
I do have one. I do, I have a couple of questions, actually. Do we have a completion day for the Dunk Road paving?
Nate and the crew are going to get out and take care of the shoulders.
Okay.
That's their task.
Do you know when that's going to happen?
I don't, but we'll get them on.
And also, we still have a poll on Bowdy Road. That was going to be done early this spring. Still there. We just can't let that slip by another season.
The one with the pink painted around the hole?
Well, the pink saw wore off, though. Somebody's got to repaint it. Maybe we'll paint it kangaroo green or something this time.
Two notes to kind of call attention to on the police department report. Congratulations to Chief Humphries on being elected by his peers at the Vermont Police Chiefs Association for position of the southern Vermont directions. And a big thank you to our officers who attended the opening ceremonies and events with the Special Olympics up in Essex.
Excellent.
Excellent. Thank you.
I know that Mr. Doran mentioned this at our last meeting two weeks ago, but I, I wanted to reiterate that we had, I had the same observation, that the swap shop could use some signage, probably pointing it out. We, just that it was hard to tell where it was when you're pulling in. And I think if anyone didn't already know it was there, they might miss it. So, just wanted to reiterate sort of his observation that it's hard to find a little bit.
Good. Anything else for Joe? Moving on, old business, it looks like there's no old business. New business is appointment to the planning commission. Did we have a bunch of people come running in with their hands up saying?
There were so many people trying to get in the door, nobody made it.
Nobody made it?
No.
Well, we can still be hopeful. All right. Moving on then to the sewer budget review. How did you want to do this? Before we go through line by line, did, was there some general statements, or did you want us to?
So, I did get a call. We talked, I talked with Glenn just a little bit, just about, number one, about salaries. The wastewater salaries, it says 11.38%. That is accurate. I went back through and did the calculations. It's the union, the union contract. That's what the salary increase is for this department. I think the average was 4% overall, but this department saw a little bit higher of an increase. And then for the, what was it, other purchase services? It was at 26K back in 2024. That was a lot of sewer flushing. It costs us 15,000, hang on, $15,000 for one, to flush for one full day.
So...
And then there were one, two, three, four, four other sewer flushings out of that, in addition to that.
Right, and I think that unfortunately, we really need to actually increase that sewer flushing. And I'm actually going to bid that out this year, because we need to not only flush them, but we need to be getting roots out. And if we use a degreaser, of which A1 is not, they do not have the capability of using a degreaser, we really need to decrease those lines. So, that, that 15,000 was just for A1 to do one flushing. And we know that we will have to be calling them in at least four or five more times throughout the year for some of our problem areas to have them come flush out some lines. So, we know Forest Street's a problem, and we know Capitol Hill's a problem, and we know that Orkshire by the Park is a problem.
So, I...
Go ahead.
I see 26 for FY '24, and we're at 23,000 this year. Is it going to be similar to this year's flushings, or are we going to see more flushings?
I suspect that if I, when I price it out and get what we actually really need, it might be slightly higher.
But did, did we, I'm just saying, when I looked in, in other purchase services, there's really two things that came to mind, as for both you and Joe. One, if we know we're going to be doing something called sewer flushing, and it's fairly expensive, I'd like to see it as a separate line item, not under other purchase service.
The only thing that's in that line is sewer flushing.
Other purchase service is just sewer flushing?
That's all it is. That's all we've ever put in there.
Can we have...
Can we call it sewer? No, I, I would, it would just, when I, when I looked at it, I always looked at the other purchase service that was quite high, and I'm saying, okay, what are we?
Yeah, we can call it.
What are, what are we doing?
But the only thing...
But we've been doing about, see, so, is the game plan? Because I mean, is the game plan to do a certain amount every year? And that way, you can plan, you can, you can budget for it. What is that, that certain amount is 15,000?
So, that 15,000 is recurring every single year with A1. That's just doing it once a year in October. But I have a feeling, like I said, when I price that out and get some additives added into that, it may be slightly higher.
Yes.
And so, I've actually been working on, and capital improvements are kind of like another section to this. I have stuff on top of it, but I've been pricing out what it will take to fix the lines that we have problems with. And Fourth Street alone, it's two, the estimate that I, the one estimate that I've gotten back so far is $250 a foot. So, there's 1,800 feet of Fourth Street that needs to be fixed.
And the problem, now, and I'm just trying to get my head around, we talked, is the problem?
Um, the problem is...
A manhole covers, bad piping, but what's, what's?
So, on Fourth Street, we have, from the section, from Mechanic Street back to this main street out here, it's PVC pipe, but there's a lot of roots in there. So, A1, when they're flushing, cannot get out roots. That's a whole different company that's, that has a root grinder that comes in. The section from, um... The 1,800 feet, they go the opposite direction out to South Main, is all that old clay pipe. And that is basically breaking up. So, I actually, we did the cammering of that line. We did that a couple of weeks ago, beginning of May. And they found some breaks, they found tons of roots. But I had hoped that in doing that, that we would be able to get a company to come in and line that pipe. It's six-inch line. They don't recommend lining six-inch pipe. In fact, most of the companies that are coming in and doing it now are recommending going to eight-inch line. And so, when I priced that out, the first quote that I have so far, it's, it's taking some time, because they have to go through the cammering that I have, and it's kind of like a busy time of year right now. So, I kind of fell into it a little bit later than I had hoped to. But right now, $250 a foot, that's, we can, we can go and flush that line for, what did we figure, Joe? 30 years?
30 years, yeah. Yeah, instead of spending the $500,000 to do it.
So...
Yeah, but you got to think a little bit ahead here. That line could, could be failing.
It is failing.
But it could fail quicker than we think. And just, just flushing it is not really going to...
And that's part of the, part of the PVC that's been replaced.
Let's start thinking about doing some real, real fixing here.
So, that is my plan, but I'm thinking that we're going to have to just do a section at a time. We're not going to be able to do the whole street.
Yeah, and we're not, not trying to put you on the spot.
I agree with that.
So, it sounds like, I answered my question of what the 15,000? And it's probably, you're in the process of putting a plan very similar to, like, like a paving plan that says, "Here's what we have, here's the worst, here's the plan, and here's the money I need from here."
And I kind of wanted to get into my capital plan a little bit later, after we went through the original numbers. But this manhole, we can move to it right now. This manhole out here at the corner of West is a major, major problem. Bricks are coming out of it all the time. Those bricks are flowing down, and they're basically building a dam. That's one of the lines we had to just recently come and jet out, and he actually couldn't get through it. So, I would really like to get that manhole done. The engineer's estimate on that is $40,000 for that one manhole. And that's because that manhole's going to have to be bypass pumped. I had a company, I have a company that's going to come and look at it to see if we can actually line it from the outside in, and kind of shortcut doing the bypass pumping. But the most expensive part of that is the bypass pumping.
Is... Questions coming to my mind, because those are big dollars. Is there any kind of state, I, I thought the state was talking about infrastructure and, and water and sewer going along with their Act 181 and all that good stuff. Are we looking at, is there any opportunities to get some?
For the clean waters?
To get some funding help to fix the problem with our, basically, our infrastructure going? Because I, I'm going to do, we can flush for a long time for the cost of repair.
But it's just money, just...
I know it's money, I know it's money thrown away, but I'm saying, is there, are there some monies where we can take some grant money and put some monies together, because, and get that price tag?
My take on it is, you can flush, yes, but eventually, you're going to have to do it anyway. And the price is always going to be higher the longer you wait. So, let's, let's...
And, and well...
Start some real thinking about it now.
Oh, right, but the, and then I'm, I'm still thinking in my mind to saying, okay, carrying the weight of fixing the sewer lines at those dollars and putting it all on the water and sewer people as a, and it's a major infrastructure for the town, there's, there's, there's other elements that, that, you, I'm, people just aren't going to be able to afford water and sewer, if you put those kind of numbers on.
That's why I say we got to get a plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I'm definitely...
But we got to do, you know, I mean, we just can't.
But for this year, what we're looking at is 15. That's what, that's what the, I've got. And even though it says other purchase services for flushing.
And so, you have to keep in mind that even when we get these repairs done, we're still going to have to continue line flushing. Stuff is still going to build up. Every year, line flushing is going to be an expense, because we have grease in the system, we've got rags, we've got... Even if we replaced every single line in town, by the time we got every single line in town fixed, there's still going to be sags, there's still going to be the need to get the grease out.
That's, that's what I'm thinking.
So, that line flushing, it's there.
It's, but I'm just saying, it's hard to put...
It's the extra stuff.
Replacing all that, putting in the regular budget where, where line flushing, to me, is not the answer. The answer is, I think you're going to talk about it, is, it's, whether it's capital reserves, it's capital improvement, it's a, you've got to...
Right, but think of line flushing as part of your maintenance. It's a maintenance item for our sewer lines.
But it's easier to, easier and cheaper and quicker to maintain a good line as it is a junk.
Right, so either way, we're still going to have to do that. It's just, maybe we get the entire system flushed rather than 12 streets.
That's what I'm thinking.
Right.
If I'm hearing you correctly, you need more than 15 this year.
So, I have two projects that I really would like to get done this year. I would like to get that manhole on West Street, because I've already kind of been talking to the engineers, and I have a pretty good feel of how much that's going to cost us. The other thing is problem, when we did the refurbishment at the plant, face protection was never put in. We've already got one insurance loss. The chances are of us losing a leg again is very, very high. Face protection to put in the plant is $29,000. So, right now...
And that would be under other purchase, other purchase service.
Um, I'd like to do that, it probably is, so...
So, could I make a suggestion?
Absolutely.
Could we go through the budget?
That's what...
I was going to say, I was going to say, because all the money, all the money we're talking about in here is, I want to cut the, what you're proposing, I don't want to add to it. Just so you understand, just so you understand, so you're, but, so, okay. Who, are we, at a point where you want to go line item by line item?
I'm ready.
Yeah, okay, good.
Oh, I thought that's where it would work. That's why I was focused on the line item.
No, well, they, I think that was just so I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have heard that when she says, "Okay, so for a mere hundred and something thousand dollars, we can, we could be fine." Yes, we could. Okay, let's, let's do first, 025-6300 administration. Any, any questions, folks?
Double the postage?
Postages, yeah.
So, the rate of postage increases, it might be cheaper to hire a courier service.
And you addressed the salary thing already. Is that, is that a piece of the salary from down below up here, or is it different? Or is that the admin from in here that you spread out?
No, that's, so the sewer admin salary, that is 17 and a half, accountant 30%, Eileen receivables, and then 15% me. So, and then it's the same on the water side, 17 and a half, 30, 15.
Yeah, yeah, look like that. So, we're good on that one? How about 025-6340 sewer lines?
So, for other purchased services, so for flushing, is 15 fine, or do you need more for flushing?
I'm comfortably leaving it at 15 for flushing.
Anything else in that line item, folks?
Oh, she'd go to 15, I'm good with that.
Mm-hmm. Till we get the real numbers on the plan, I, I feel more comfortable.
So, my only concern with 15 is we, we, we were at 26 and 24. And then in 25, we budgeted 13, and we're at 23.
And, but in 23, we only spent 13, 8. See, we'll spend as much as we put there, but I'm just saying, what's the plan, how much do you need?
We spend more than what we put there this year.
This year, I, I, I see that. So, you would think you wouldn't have to put as much, because we spent, go, go ahead.
You would think that you wouldn't have to put as much, but you've got to remember, it's aging even more. So, we're giving it more problems.
Yeah.
So, and I think you can see that easily by these numbers. I mean, look at, they're, they're constantly increasing, they're not going down. And they're increasing because the problems are increasing.
Yeah, the, the old system, and I get it, between the roots and the, and the slate, the old sewer system is just falling out and underneath it. It's just just...
Right, and, and also note, too, that when we call them out, when we have one issue, we've been very good about, because I've kind of taken the lead on this. Instead of, we used to just call them out, they, they flushed whatever the problem was, and then they went back. We keep them here for the half day, because we're putting, we're paying them for a half day regardless of how long they're here. So, I know now the hot spots. So, when they come for a problem by the park, I'm making them hit all three before they go home.
That's, that's a definitely good idea.
So, you know, we're, we're getting the, the most bang for our buck when we do call them in, though.
That's, good, that's, for now?
That's good business.
Let's go to 025-6390 wastewater treatment. Questions? Again, Joe addressed the salary, that's, but I, I look at that 11.38% increase, that's for this year. Next year, when we're sitting here, we've already done the adjustment. I would not expect 11.38, I would expect, right, a smaller number. We're just, this is just a course correction type, I'd like to think.
Yeah, next year's just 2% increase.
Any, let's see here, on that one, communications down at 6390, 3400. It had the 4% increase in communications. We went from 2,523 to close to 4, 4...
I could go so.
Okay.
So, we used to have terrible internet at the plant. It used to, it used to literally take me two hours to try and upload a document that I had to send to the state. It's an annual report. Actually brought it up here, and Joe actually had to do it one time, and he... Actually brought it up here, and Joe actually had to do it one time, and he saw how big the, the problem is. We corrected that, we have better internet. When we corrected our phone system, and we went to the new digital phone system, we now have to have two phone systems because our dialing program that we have down there, our dial-out, is still on the old analog system. So eventually, we will have to change the dialer there, and we can get rid of the landline, but for now, we have to carry both. I haven't wanted to, to make the switch to getting new dialers, because that's gonna be an expense too. So that's the increase in the fee.
When will that switch happen, or is it gonna be?
I'm gonna wait until I have to on that, until they say there's no more copper, then I'll switch it. Cause I don't think we're spending a lot on one landline down there.
That's like twenty bucks.
Yeah, so I've got other things that need addressing.
Okay, any other questions on wastewater treatment? Silence to me, no, I'm going to move on to oh twenty-five sixty-four hundred biosolid management. Any questions there?
Can we go back?
Back, sure.
Zero two-five six-three nine zero fifty-six, other purchase services.
Yeah.
Ten thousand's proposed, we had ten thousand in the budget in twenty-five, and we're, we've spent twenty-eight thousand.
So actually, those other, there's, between accounting and some other little errors, other purchase services and back to operating supplies, there's kind of, there's a carryover between those two accounts. So there's things in that account, one in the other account, so I think you'll find that operating supplies is actually gonna be a little bit lower than predicted, and that's the difference between the two, it's, it's just a, it's just a accounting error between the two, the two accounts. So I think some of our chemicals got dumped into other purchase services.
Got into the wrong line item.
Yes, it's in the wrong line item.
But when you, so when you take, when you take that increase and you go back and, I'm with you. Did that answer your question? Okay. If nothing else, I'm gonna move on to the biosolid management, oh twenty-five sixty-four hundred. Nothing. Look good, it's hard, hard to, zero percent increase in minus thirty-three, it's hard to argue with those. How about zero twenty-five sixty-four ten debt service for the sewer?
I don't think you can change it.
Looks good, looks good, zero, again, I get the same argument, hard, hard to argue with it, so moving on. Under oh twenty-five ninety-seven hundred benefits. Is that where we're gonna fix the workers' comp?
Yeah, let me scroll down here.
The twelve-five?
Yeah, so under workers' comp, again, this is the same thing we did with the water department. Instead of twelve-five, it should be eight thousand three hundred, so we can, we can make that reduction.
Okay.
And do I recall the water department's health insurance premiums going down as well owing to a change in carrier, or is, am I misremembering that? No?
We are looking into a separate carrier. But we're not there yet. No, health insurance was up a little bit for them.
Okay, so that, that's a three, three, three grand, that's, that's good. Then you just have the totals at the end, so when you take, when you take that one out, that two point three eight turns into what?
One point six nine.
One point six nine?
Yeah, positive one point six nine.
And the, and the reason I asked that question, you know how we did water last meeting? They went down, one point seven, this one went up by one point seven, so it sounded like it was a pretty good job of keeping it that way. So that's the line item by line item.
Can we talk about, I didn't mean, can we talk about water real quick?
Yeah, cause I thought we had to, is there a slight adjustment we need to make in water, I do, that's what I wanted to-
There is, so we did take a few thousand out of retirement, because we were looking at the year-to-date, and it looked a little funny as we weren't using that money. But in fact, there was, so under, so for the admin, you know, me, Terry, and me, the accountant, and Eileen, a portion of our retirement should come out of this line. So they, whoever it was, was taking it out of, all out of oh one oh, not out of here, so this line should be bumped back up to nine thousand to accurately reflect where the expenses are coming from.
And what does that bring, one or two, when you do that?
Add it. With that, it's still a reduction, it's just not reducing it that much. It's a negative point seven six, so not quite a one percent decrease.
Looking for us to say, hey, that was, you're just fixing something that-
Yeah.
Should've been there, it's just a fixed cost, so make, make it so. Wanted to talk about, what I don't see in front of me, and I would like, because we, we talked about all those things earlier, do we know what we have, and do we have any capital reserve improvement monies? And what's the amount of money, and can we have a, a little discussion around, do we, do we need to, at budget time this year, when we do this fall, do we need to get some more money there, and you'll have time to do more research and get some firmer figures? But what do we have for now?
Currently, you have three hundred and fifty-two, three hundred and fifty-two thousand.
In our, that, that- That could be used to fix this infrastructure? So things are just, if, if something, I'm saying there was a major implosion on one street, and we, we got them here, and we said, we, let's, let's go and just have this fixed from here to there, there's monies that we can get there?
I really think that we need to discuss fourth, fourth street sounds to me like the worst, the worst problem right now. With, in addition to this man-
And, and the bricks that are going down down here, right?
What if, what if we used to do both of them jobs in one contract? Get a, you know-
Get a quote to see?
Get a quote, get, put it out to bid, whatever we have to do. Get the, get that much of it done.
See, and I, and I, understanding when you have this, I'm waiting for you to say, whether you, I can't tell by your, your face, Joe, whether you're having heartburn or not with this, because I'm saying, understand, we go out and we have this done, and we take that cap reserve and we deplete it down. Our job in budget season is, how do we put monies back to give, because you, you've gotta keep your capital reserve so that you can fix things to break, which you're-
So I don't, I don't think, you don't, you certainly don't have the money to do fourth street, it's five hundred thousand?
That's-
It's about a half million just to do the-
Half a million to do fourth.
So that's, you're doing a boner loan. You have the money to do the manhole, though, which is, Kerry can tell you that's-
Can we stop, do we have the money to stop the bricks rolling down, that, that way we can, we can do that?
I think so.
So, for this year, the two capital projects that I would like to get done come to sixty-nine six. And that would be face protection at the plant and doing that manhole.
And, and taking it out of your capital reserve?
Yeah.
How do, how do you feel about that, Joe?
I think that's great.
And then, for year two, because I, I want to use some of that capital money for improvements at the plant all the time, plus, plus we know we have a lot to do on our collection system, year two, I would like to, if we haven't already addressed in this year, if we can't figure out some way to address fourth street, then I would like to pick the worst section of fourth street, do that, and put a generator in the plant. And I've talked to emergency management, I've been trying to find grant money, there is no grant money out there right now for emergency management. And that generator, it's only a matter of time before it bites its head off. Right now, the only thing that I can run down there is I can run my chemicals. I can run the chemicals off from the backup system that we have right now that's automatic, we'll run the chemicals for two hours. I then have that little small portable generator that I can run the chemicals indefinitely. But that does not give me air, and that does not give me return. I can go approximately eight hours without losing the blanket and the clarifier. If we lose the blanket and the clarifier, we're in violation.
What's, what's this, if we push this as long as we can, I hate to say kick the can down the road, but we push as long as we can, your generator goes, is there concern that the, the supply line, we can't get one in the timely manner, if we had to go because we still had money in the cap to go get a generator?
So, right now, we don't even have a transfer switch. So the transfer switch alone is thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand dollars?
Thirty thousand, just-
Switch it over?
Just to manually switch it. And I, I've got two quotes on that so far.
So?
And part of the problem is, is that we, the way the plant was engineered, really electrical, all of the main power goes into one MCR panel. So I can't pick and choose what I wanna run, so therefore, I have to either rebuild that panel, which means pulling out the air, pulling out the return pumps, whatever I wanna pull out, or sizing a generator that'll run everything. So there's two options, repale it, which is not cheap either, or size it correctly and run everything. I've learned a lot this year electrically, more than I ever, ever wanted to know.
After the, yeah, I can understand.
For, for a transfer switch and generator, I'm thinking seventy plus?
No, I'm thinking probably, actually, the transfer switch, believe it or not, is the more expensive part than the generator.
Really?
Yeah, it's kinda crazy.
So I guess my question is, you were looking to do some work with your panel and fix the brick problem, is the move while they're writing, they're doing the panel, to do that, that-
Two separate items.
Two separate, two separate things.
Because I'm thinking that if we're gonna get a generator, we're gonna do it right, and we're not gonna split the panel out, we're gonna run everything that we need to run.
Do it the way you need to, that's another discussion, another time?
Right, and then we have an emergency management center if we need it, you know, that plant is huge down there, we've got water, we've got sewer, we've got everything that we need, that could actually be an emergency management place down there, self, self-running.
Absolutely.
So my hope is that if we wait on that another year, that there might be funds to help us with that. So that's the only reason I'm bumping that out. For me, that generator is top priority, but I'm hoping that there's some funds will come available that we can kind of supplement that. The other things that we have that we wanna do, right now there are no funds available, so I think, just jump on it and do it.
Good.
Thinking about fourth street, when was it, maybe two years ago now, there was some sort of leak in that line where we had some residential cleanup we had to tend to.
In that space, it backs up right there.
How, how much did that-
That was, that was a break right at, around Carnarvon.
High, Carnarvon, yeah.
High Street and Carnarvon, right in there.
How much did that run us for repair?
I don't think, yeah, I don't think, you're talking about homeowner, for the repair to the-
Like any reimbursement to the homeowner.
Honestly, Chad, I don't recall if we did any.
I'm just thinking, how many times are we gonna do that before, before we tackle, I think we do need to do larger sections at once, but the whole thing, that's, that's quite a bit of money.
Right, I, I think you got, we-
And I only have one quote on that so far, so I really wanna go that, I wanna, I wanna do an RFP with the engineers and put that out to, to at least put that out to bid and let some of our local contractors, because this was actually a New York company, I had called them for the, for the lining, because my hope was after the clay, after the cambering, that we could actually just go in there and line that. Because, and I didn't think originally that you could line that clay pipe, but you can line it, but now they're saying that they don't recommend because it's only six inch, and, you know, you have a six inch line to begin with, and you line it, you don't have even a six inch line anymore. So I don't wanna waste our money trying to line it if that's not gonna work.
So we're gonna go ahead with those, with those, what else did you have you wanted to talk to us about? Any other comments or questions from board?
No, I mean, we're on the right track, we've gotta really think about some long-term good solid replacements. But we do have to, we do have to find out where our money's coming from.
Yes, Joe.
You said it's sixty-nine thousand for this year's plan?
Yeah, sixty-nine six.
Sixty-nine six. So the board would choose to deposit into reserve funds now, it's not a, it's not a, it's not an oh one oh budget, deposit into reserve funds, you'd, you'd make that decision at this time. So right now, if you did, if Kerry did do her capital, capital improvements-
Do you need a motion?
No, 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 no. Right, what I'm saying is, right now you're depositing forty thousand dollars into your sewer capital reserve today. If Kerry spends sixty-nine six, then you're actually in a negative, what, nineteen K? You've not, you've not covered the cost, so you're now in the negative in your capital reserve.
I thought we were at three hundred and fifty.
I thought we had three hundred thousand in capital reserve.
You do, but you're gonna spend sixty-nine, and you're only adding forty back.
So you're gonna pull out of that, you're gonna pull out of that capital.
So be negative, nineteen, nineteen less than what we have.
Exactly right, you'll have nineteen thousand less tomorrow than you would today.
That's correct, but I'm saying, and, that's a discussion for, we want this discussion because you wouldn't talk about it again in the fall, when we do capital reserves, we have to, we do the-
Capital reserves for water and sewer are right now for this, because we do reserve funds for water and sewer during water and sewer.
I'm not, I'm, I don't mind going down by the nineteen, I don't wanna put anything back, I wanna spend and, spend it down and leave it there. I'm not ready to spend more money right now.
Okay, well, right, right now it's forty K in the, the deposit.
Right.
And that's flat funded from years.
And it means that-
Last year at least.
What'd you say, there's forty K, help me understand?
So on the, yeah, on the last page of your proposed budget, forty thousand dollars are there already?
And we're gonna spend additional nineteen, take that out of the three hundred thousand.
Exactly.
Let it come down, and that's still good, I wanna leave it there, that's, that's what I want, I don't, don't wanna put money back right now.
I just wanted to-
I agree.
Make sure everybody was on the same page that.
Because it, because I wanna see the bigger numbers for what's going on, because if we, the numbers are as high as it sounds like it's gonna be, we'll be-
Nice, nice.
It's a different, it's a different discussion, it's a bond discussion, it's, it's, it's a different discussion. Good, anything else for Kerry? I wanna thank you very much for coming in and-
So we're going to do the manhole, and-
And that's, let me put that out there, that's the engineer's estimate, too.
Yeah, it might be, the difference, right, the difference, plus or minus, I understand when you're-
So I don't wanna somebody coming back and telling me, hey, you said it was only forty. That's the engineer's estimate, and I'm kinda relying on them, because after doing the research that I'm doing, I had no idea things were as expensive as they were, so.
Chances are, it's gonna be more than that by-
Yeah, and I think, it's all gonna depend too on how fast they get it done and how long they have to bypass pump.
Exactly.
So.
I'm going to wrap up the, so, before we leave that topic, is the game plan at our next meeting that you'll have to finish thing and we, we finalize our water and sewer?
Yep, next meeting, we'll pull, we'll pull the budgets together into the revenue, the revenue chart, we'll put it up on the board, and you'll see what that impact has on your water and sewer rates.
Right, we'll do the rates, good, very good, thank you for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks, Kerry.
Thank you.
Okay, we're now at number nine, two minutes for public comment. Do I have any public comment? Not seeing any parking lot.
I'm sure everything, well, let's talk about the public garage and salt shed.
Yeah.
So that bond did pass, two hundred and two to forty.
Two oh two. Hey, alright, alright.
I don't wanna get to get, I said forty, but.
Good.
Bear with me, two hundred and two to forty-eight.
To forty-eight?
Yep.
Good.
So I'll, I'll take that off of the list of-
So the salt shed, the salt shed can come off. Transfer station operation is still gonna stay on for now, or did you, can we take that off?
No, I, so I, I really see the transfer station as a, as a place, as an oppor, it's a place of opportunity where we can generate a little bit more revenue or significantly cut our costs. I know we spent a lot of money on taking free on out of all those fridges. For a few thousand dollars in training, we can buy our own equipment. It, it might not be a like today thing, but, you know, down the road, I think we can, we can make some changes. So, if it's okay, I'd like to leave that there.
Okay.
I see opportunity.
Yeah. And I see, is there, there was an email about an information meeting on downtown, down zoning, information meeting that's gonna help with the subdivision and downtown designation that the planning commission's working on, an information meeting?
They have, let me see, I posted a public hearing for July second for those, so that's for the planning committee. They have, let me see, I posted a public hearing for July second for those, so that's for the planning committee.
Okay, so, moving forward on, on those.
Yeah, those are good, those are moving forward too.
Good. Any other comments or questions from the board on, on the parking lot items? Great news about the bond. Uh, roundtable, Sam.
I don't know, there was a lot of discussion last night, um, at the meeting about the bond vote, about how we might do a little bit more to let people know that those meetings are happening. I thought that was worthwhile discussion. I mean, Seal, I didn't get a chance to really pick her brain, but she made mention to, perhaps in the past, that someone was actually going door-to-door noticing people about bond votes happening, or, or something to that effect. I, I don't know. But it, it did, you know, get my gears turning a little bit about what we might, what we might do, and I thought we could discuss it at some point. If not tonight, maybe in the future.
Okay. Anything else? Rich?
Well, on that subject, if, if somebody wants to spread negative news, it flies like wildfire through the town. How come something positive doesn't fly through the town? It's just a question.
I mean, we've got to blame the Facebook algorithm for the first.
No.
Unfortunately.
I guess, I'm just asking, I'm not on it, but, you know, it's, it's kind of a funny thing, how that works.
Okay.
And, uh, again, I mean, I can't stress enough the drainage, the importance of drainage on these hot roads, uh, and streets. We have a lot of water that lays on the streets, it doesn't run into the catch basins, and somehow, some way, we've got to kind of get that water off the highways. And that's all I have for tonight.
Chad?
Oh, you know, I didn't have much, but then I thought graduation is, uh, right around the corner. So, just a congratulations to the class of twenty-twenty-five.
Absolutely.
I did think of one other thing.
Go ahead, Sam.
People were talking an awful lot last night about the electric scooters.
Oh, the.
Yeah, we discussed that, and asked as a board.
The little ones on the electric scooters that go zipping down the sidewalk and zipping across the street, uh.
They're having fun, aren't they?
Yeah.
They are, I just hope they stay safe.
Right, exactly.
That's the only concern, I, I, yes. Okay, uh, and you said that, uh, the lights are in for the flashing lights for the crosswalk, uh, and everything, so that, that's good. So, that, that's, uh, just, just around the corner. So, cool. Let's move on to the, uh, review of the financial reports.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the payroll warrant of twenty-nine-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and forty cents.
No, I, I think it's forty thousand.
Did I have the long, where did you see that?
I can't see the payroll folder there.
I think he was right.
I just wanted to, well, only, only because it's been running right around forty all, all the time, I, I get it right from here.
My eyes deceived me.
Thirty-nine, wasn't it?
No, yeah, it's, yeah.
It's, it's the, the forty.
I'll make a motion, a different motion, to approve the payroll warrant of forty-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty dollars and forty-nine cents.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Rich. All those in favor?
I. I think I have this one right. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the general warrant of two-hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, five-hundred-and-thirteen dollars and seventy-one cents.
Do I have a second? I just, that's what my members show, too.
That's all right.
Yeah, that's great. Do I have a second? Do I have a second?
Yes, a second. You have a second.
I have a second, thank you, Sam. And, and do you want to tell us what the big items were on the warrant that, that brought it up, two-hundred-and-twenty-four?
Uh, we have appropriations at eighty-six thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty-six. We have Wilk paving, is that what I'm seeing? At sixty-eight thousand-one-hundred-and-thirteen dollars, and Belden at fifteen thousand-eight-hundred-and-forty-six.
All right, all those in favor?
And our checkbook sits at five-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and eleven cents.
Cool. And we do have an executive session if someone wants to make a motion?
Make a motion, go into executive session under one VSA three-thirteen A one F, attorney-client communications. Second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you very much.